We will be calling it as we. Yes, our Mr. G D will call.
Will call.
Elise Budoff? Here.
Oh.
You want to go first?
Here.
Mayor Coons? You're here, will call.
Will call.
Here, yes, I am.
Ellis Moreno? Here.
Here.
Okay. Uh, the next item is to approve the two sets of minutes from the public hearing and the planning commission meeting on October 16th. Before we do a movement, um, I have a question for the solicitor.
Sure.
Um, for both the public hearing minutes as well as the meeting minutes. Uh, we have a full house today and I think the mayor is pretty good at getting everyone to sign in, but in the event that we have, um, a person that attend does not sign in and also does not contribute at all to the meeting, are we required to amend the minutes to include their presence and anything there or?
No, you are not obligated to do that.
Okay, alright, so given that, um, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? The coming of the.
Move to approve the public hearing minutes. Second.
Thank you. Elise Budoff? Approved, yes. Mark Porter?
Yes.
Well, William Coons?
Yes.
Phyllis Moreno? Yes. Greg Green?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And the planning commission meeting minutes, move to approve, Madam Chair.
I'd move to approve those as well. Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Do, what, did we do both or did we just do?
We did the first one first and now the, the second one.
I wanted to approve, um, the meeting minutes as well.
Second.
Thank you. Elise Budoff?
Yes.
Mark Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Coons?
Yes.
Moreno? Yes. Greg Green?
Yes.
Alright, and we are officially approved. Alright, the first, uh, oh, before we get started, because there are so many people here, I wanted to let you know, on each item, we're allowing, um, if anyone here has questions regarding the item, technically, we're not required to allow when it's not a public hearing, but if there's anyone that has any questions, when we're done discussing the items, we will give you five minutes, um, to do so and we'll keep track of the time. Okay? The first agenda item, PC case 2514 pursuant to section 3.05b of the zoning code, the planning commission shall schedule a public hearing within 60 days of the conditional use permit application submitted by Mr. Joseph Paul Prentice.
Prentice.
Thank you. And JFP Architects representing Mr. Greg McBride applicant who is seeking approval to open a restaurant. Daru?
Daru.
Daru. At 506 Washington, uh, with the new signage and exterior modifications. Really today, while we're here to do is schedule a public hearing. Do want to commend you for working Father Derek, Father John, and getting some parking there, so. Commend you on that and, uh, we're looking forward to you learning more. For the public hearing, I believe December 11th would be our next meeting. I think it's the only public hearing item, so we could probably do 7pm and then the regular meeting to follow.
You can, yes. You can also set a different date if that's what you're going to do, but yes, that is the regular meeting.
How are you on timing and would December 11th be sufficient? To do the public hearing?
For like drawings?
No, just to schedule our public hearing and then the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Soon as it's there.
Okay, yeah, and is there a time, how much time do you need?
20 days.
Okay.
And that's 20.
Yeah, so I think one meeting in December for all of us would probably be sufficient. Okay. I move to schedule the public hearing for Daru, uh, restaurant at 506 Washi- East Washington Street for December 11th at 7pm with the regular meeting to follow.
Second.
Thank you. Elise Budoff?
Yes.
Mark Porter?
Yes.
William Coons?
Yes.
Phyllis Moreno? Yes.
Yes.
We're all set? You're welcome to stay if you'd like or? That on through, I, I do appreciate you coming and, well, we do the public hearings always filled back because you come so prepared and that's all we do. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure.
Good.
Thank you, you as well. Okay. Moving on, agenda item number two, PC case number 2515, applicant Ms. Alexa, just ask, El- Algaire, thank you, is seeking to open an occupational therapy clinic, foundation's pelvic therapy at 200 Industrial Parkway, unit 4E owned by Mr. Ed Gotchak. Before I go into questions, Alexa, why don't you please share your business and what you're looking to do here?
Um, it's a one-on-one therapy practice. I will be the only one working, uh, there around. My patient at a time, uh, I specialize in pelvic floor therapy, so, um, one person coming and going, I can give you all the details on pelvic floor therapy if you want, but.
I'm curious a little bit about it, sure.
A lot of people think pelvic floor therapy, oh, I have a baby, like, I need to go get stronger and everything, just do your eagles, you'll be fine, um, it's a lot more involved than that, um, I specialize in pelvic floors for both, um, people with female and male genitalia, um, prolapse and incontinence, erectile dysfunction, all those things, all are pelvic floor therapy, so those will all be things that I can address.
Are you covered by insurance for HSA?
Yeah, so I have, um, so it'll be a cash-based practice for now, um, I can take HSA, FSA, um, and then, you're talking about patients, insurance? Yeah, um, it'll just be cash-based for now.
Okay. Anyone else have a question?
Yes, um, are you downstairs from 200 or up?
Downstairs, yeah.
So, um, the old issue that, well, welcome to South Russell, what's, we always have an issue of parking, so you're just going to have some person in the K E I lot or?
Yeah, the adjacent lot, so if you're looking at the 200 building, my entrance is around to the right there, so it would be my vehicle and then one patient at a time. Uh, I plan on, just because it's of private nature, um, to be addressing, uh, I don't have, um, I don't plan on having people sitting there waiting for their appointment, I'll have like 10 minutes in between, so at most, there could be two people parked there besides me, but I'm hoping to keep it just one at a time.
So when you look at your building, there's a downstairs, there's an up, are they parking up or are they going to be down at the K E I area?
So, um, where there's, there's like a garage over the, do you know what?
Oh, yeah.
It could be that lot there, so.
So where's the bicycle store and the?
Yeah, oh, K E I is the, the back is upper.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? No, it would be in the front or the side.
Side, okay, see.
So the parking would, would you go up that little hill? Or would you be parking on the side by the K E I motor?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I drove back there too and I was a little.
I mean, I guess people could park back there and walk around if they wanted to, but I was going to direct people to the side.
Just as a matter, I'm sorry, a point, don't we ordinarily get a building plan and a site plan showing where the parking is and how one accesses it for a request? I mean, is there a requirement or are we just? Imagine it.
With the floor plan? What do you think?
When a building is built, the parking is designated, you still probably got the drawings in the office for the paper usage, yeah, they have a parking.
That's a good question.
Well, no, I'm, I'm asking because, um, ordinarily, we get a building plan which shows where the unit is and how, what the access is, you know, where or where restrooms might be or available, um, and we get a site plan showing where the parking is and what the access is, uh, it seems to me that we're taking a step away from having good information to complete the process.
We do this standard operating procedure, so we're not kind of doing what would normally been done. I, I, yeah, I think, I think.
No, I think it's fine.
It was your question.
Will that be forthcoming?
By? To the, the owner of the property?
Yes, I was going to try to get something reported on that.
Have you been in touch with Mr. Gotchak?
I mean, he told me he was in the other town and not able to come today, but I was not aware that I needed him, but, I don't understand, picture or anything, I mean, I can, yeah.
The, the, one of the reasons I'm bringing this up is that he came, someone came in last meeting, he didn't have a really, I mean, he had a hand-drawn, um, building layout, which was crude at best, the layout, the layout. Yes, I understand, I understand. You know, I, I think we ought to have standards and, and if the material isn't presented, I think we should table the matter until the material is available.
When do you want to?
Uh, we in January.
Move to the December 11th meeting.
Yeah, she could come to the December. Well, um, Ruth, would she have to come to the December meeting if they're going to get us the information, we just table the whole thing until that. Well, what we could do is give approval, subject to the provision of a parking plan provided by the owner, acceptable to the building commissioner.
And after the meeting, you guys can cash out, talk a lot.
Yeah.
Before you get an activity, I was going to review and go through and do everything.
Because parking is a major issue, as you know, Chagrand, South Russell, and it's important to have it done.
I want to know who, where the property lines are, like, where does Mr. Gotchak's property go as far as, how would that be to the north of the buildings that would go into K E I's, the, like, property, because the driveway you would enter is where you're going to get to K E I number. But the parking would be to the left of that, so who owns that strip and doesn't need to be marked? And where they would be parked, because that's where the parking is off of the K E I entrance, not the front entrance, but. So we may want to ask them to clarify that, just in.
Well, I mean, also, is the parking marked? I mean, we've had enough issues that, yeah, I mean. Well, it, it should be a requirement, I would think, um, that we should have it in our zoning code, solicitor, is that in the zoning code?
The striping?
The striping?
It's in the zoning code.
It is.
It is, okay.
I mean, you guys could table this until the next meeting, as long as there's additional information that's provided, sounds like you want more than a parking plan though, that David was being.
Well, I mean, normally, we get, we get a building plan that shows where the unit is, how one accesses it, you know, customary things, and we don't have any of that.
Because if I remember correctly, this is also the building that has the dogs rumor people be in, is that the same building?
They were 300.
That was a different building.
That's a different building?
I think.
He owns a few of them back there. Okay, so it's a different, just to make sure.
Right, well, I'm not, we can do it at the December 11th meeting if you're okay with that and the provision of the parking plan and the drawings that we're talking about, so we have a full picture of how your business integrates into that area.
So what do I need to provide? So Ed, Ed has these pictures that he's supposed to send in or? I, I just want to be clear and how, because I, I filled, went in and filled out this paperwork, I didn't know, I would have brought pictures if I knew I needed them, so I just, I just need to know what to bring.
Bring.
Um, or was not prepared.
The owner needs to provide a parking plan and a drawing that shows where your business is going to be located and the parking near it.
Floor plan. For example, on, one of the presentations coming up later, this is one of the things they've provided that shows where their unit is going to be, where the parking is, if you need a rest, because what you're doing, my question to you would be, especially in the nature of what they're doing, is there a restroom in your facility or do they have to go down the hall?
Right, down the hallway.
Yeah, and just to see that, just to see, so.
Your owner knows this. Yeah, everything, the only thing I would say, I mean, your paperwork, just to let you know, we are 44022, not 23.
I, I do that now.
Everything else should be, uh, off your shoulders.
But just make sure he doesn't, for your sake.
And then I don't need to submit anything else, like, this paperwork will also be part of my next.
Yeah, you don't have to do it again, no. We're tabling this until December 11th, provision of the additional information, and then we'll go from there.
Was that a motion or?
I was just going to say, was that a motion?
I move that we table the current matter and.
Second.
Until December 11th, and in the meantime, receive the documentation from the owner that has been addressed in this meeting, and we will consider the application at that time, after the public meeting.
Thank you.
So move.
Can I ask a little question?
Sure.
Uh, the deed has a sign there on the side of the building that nobody uses, he said I'm free to put something on there, is that another application? Do that before the next meeting?
Yes.
And then if you have it provided to give to Ruth, we can.
Like a copy of the sign or?
And the colors, all of that.
Okay.
What you're going to put up so that we know what we're looking at.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would suggest, um, stay for the man in front of you, because he's going to present a sign.
Okay, so you can see.
He knows it's good, yeah.
Yeah, what, what you'll do, okay, so we have a move.
We have a second.
Second, yeah. Ruth, Elise Budoff?
Yes.
Mark Porter?
Yes.
William Coons?
Yes.
Phyllis Moreno? Yes.
Yes.
And welcome to South Russell.
Yes.
I actually live here, actually.
Put that into town, I know, it's questionable where this is going to be. Okay, uh, next item. Number three, PC case number 2516, applicant Mr. John Benedict of Brilliant Electric Sign Company Limited is seeking approvals to replace the signage at Snap Fitness located at 524 East Washington, owned by Hannah Dooley. Mr. Benedict, floor is yours.
Thank you, um, yeah, um, so what we're basically doing is a light-for-light replacement other than there's an update to the branding, um, this is, um, actually an international company franchise, excuse me, corporate locations, um, so what, what we're replacing is also a, um, what we're going to install is a set of internally illuminated LED channel letters and numbers and then multitude raceways, um, that'll be, um, back into the, uh, of the building, um, so it's really a pretty basic, um, sign replacement, um, there's really no difference in the size of the signage.
It's not that different from the existing sign, really.
Small letters.
I still haven't had, I guess, we had for the, you know, for the architectural review board, we did include a little more detail, I can, I have a picture of it.
Wait, show this as a palette, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Is it going to be red and white or the whole thing red?
No, it's going to be red and white, so, yeah, the snap will be red, um, the 24/7 fitness will be white, but the, the slash will be red.
And it's only bigger chain, looks like their 24/7 right now is on the bottom, you're moving it to the top.
Yeah, I think they just, they, that's how they kind of they branded it, like, the kind of thick 24/7 fitness looking one together, um, and just.
How, how long will a sign like this last?
It, it depends on, on the conditions, but usually around 10 years, um, it can't be longer, um, with maintenance, um, but, yeah.
I was surprised, um, it seemed like putting the same, same sign back up and it's like, nice to see the difference, right?
It, it, it depends wherever they're at in the field, where, what the exposure is and, and what kind of.
But they're changing it into, I drove by yesterday to take a look and you can see their signage, like, behind them, when you walk in, like, on the wall, is, will that all be changed as well?
It's going to be the same type of sign, because the raceways are behind it, amongst that, that houses all the, like, trinets, um, the power supplies and that, um, so I mean, you know, like, the raceway will be updated and painted match with the sign.
Okay. And it's all backlit, it's not, you know?
It, it's internally, so, inside, like, the letters and the numbers are colored lights.
Is, is the new sign, does it fall within the same parameters size-wise as the existing one?
Yes.
Okay, so it did, it just looks different, because will the, will the word snap then be smaller, is that it?
Well, it's going to be, it's going to take up a similar amount of space, um, and I think the goal is, it, it could have, it could be slightly different, I don't have the exact dimensions of the existing, um, but the goal is that definitely fall within that code.
Does it see, of the same mounting points? Okay.
It looks like the snap right now is centered and it's going to be skewed to the right.
Yeah. So it's a 24/7 next to it, snap is going to be the left and.
Or to the left, yeah. What, is that like a logo or something to the left of the S currently?
Yes, it's.
And that, that's not going to be there?
No.
And actually, when you look at it, I don't think, I'm sure it wasn't intentional, but the type font is very similar to Shigeru Yoga, I think it'll actually look that clean the way it, um, can you put the, the, yeah.
All over the country.
Yeah, because they're all small letters.
The red color catches the eye, yeah.
It does. Any other?
Make the motion to approve that, then you go.
I will second that.
25K16.
Elise Budoff?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item, attendant number, item four, PC case number 2511, applicant Emily Muntika, thank you, Emily, would you like to?
Yes.
Of, uh, Studio One Pilates Cleveland LLC is seeking to open a Pilates studio at the property located 516 East Washington Street Suite I, owned by Washington Street Partners LLC and managed by Mr. Peter Carey. Open?
Yes.
Are you already open?
We did a soft opening, um, just to kind of get activated with, you know, things and get our teachers, you know, right, this is our second location, our first location was in Bay Village, opened in May.
In May, you, okay.
Yes, in the west side, so branching out to the east side now.
Okay. You've been hearing parking?
Always.
Is always, and I drove in there and that's where the wine bar is, right?
Yes.
That's tight in there, um, how large are your classes, how many people usually come and then how's parking available if you, and I'm sure you're going to ask some questions too, if you've been having classes, how many people are coming?
Yes, so we have a total of 10 performers, um, average about eight, um, 80% of the time our classes are filled, um.
So to at least 10 individuals?
Yes, and then we have about 10 minutes in between where, um, those clients leave and the clients come, um, it's nice because the Village Martini Bar doesn't open up until that time, all of our classes are in the morning, break in the afternoon and at night time, um, and we also are having our clients park on the side and back.
You have two employees typically?
Um, only one employee in the studio.
Okay.
So how many?
Should we run one on?
Other will be there, just one employee or?
Yes, we have one employee.
Is there more, are you going to be there?
I pop in.
Pop in?
Uh, yeah, I pop in a couple of times a week.
Okay.
Yeah, the instructor's kind of run the classes, checking in, checking out, or else they're like, I have to be self-checking.
So you don't have like a receptionist or?
No receptionist, it's self-check-in, you check in, you come to class, right after class, you leave, teacher cleans up, next, next clients come in.
There's that little bit of a gap too, so like, you know, there's like, there's a gap, so that's people, people come in, so it's not like there's going to be 20 cars and, you know, people leave and people come in, so.
Maybe you have retail there too?
No retail, I mean, we sell grip socks, but that's it, so.
Eric, can I ask you any questions?
No question, just to let you know, when I came looking, I walked right in, two, two shifts, so I forgot to lock the door.
Oh, well, and then, so our front door is always open, so the studio.
Yeah.
Because people will come in and get signed to, you know, call, text or email management, um, if they need, so sometimes people will come and take pictures, is there a class going in?
No.
Okay. Well, and also people have been in and out because we've had people, um, you know, putting in sound systems and, and, uh, sorts of stuff, so, yeah.
It looked very nice.
Yeah, it's nice.
I had no idea what it was when I walked in.
It was a dance studio, but it hadn't been updated in how long, 12 years?
35 years.
And, um, they did a great job of it.
Glad you're there, there's a lot, lot going on in that building all the time.
Yes, it's great, I think, I think that, um, we have a ton of women and men, um, in and out of all ages and, um, there's a jeweler in there, there's an air spa, a T-bar, there's a guy who, um, uh, does like African safari trips, so I think that those businesses will gain a lot of business from our, um.
Isn't that coffee shop there too?
Yeah, it's good.
There's a coffee shop.
Yeah, the coffee shop.
Yes, which, at which time are your classes in the morning, like, that, I can see you do this across businesses there.
Yeah, they are, yeah, so like, we're also leaving during coffee.
So we, we've met a lot of the owners there, we already talked about, like, they're even staying together, in the Bay Village, we're going to do a lot with the small places in the area, we promote work together, so.
What matters the most to all of us is that y'all get lunch.
Oh, yeah.
And then y'all agree on parking.
Oh, yeah, parking is the hardest, you know, so.
And when you said the parking on the side, that is your property, great, that's not, she said.
Oh, yeah.
Wherever they're parking, they're parking.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
And thank you for the, right.
So, so the 512 building is part of this property?
So, uh, just two different properties, right, same ownership, and there's cross easements between the two properties, so you can park.
On either.
On either lot.
Because snaps on the other side, is that part of the property or?
No.
Snaps are different.
That's a different property, okay.
Why? Coming here from, uh, Bay Village to Lakewood.
Why, why did you come to P side?
Yes, and the competition, I think that you're walking into competition, we want you to be successful.
Yeah, so we're walking in a competition, we offer a little bit different, um, than what, like, Pilates offers or any of the Pisces or current here, we offer a little bit more of a, um, they, they do more classical Pilates, which is so wonderful, we do classical Pilates, but with contemporaries, so we have a little bit loud music, um, a little higher vibe, it's a little bit of a different, um, style of Pilates, um, and we have been successful on the west side of town, and he is from, um, Bay Ridge, he went to Kinston, and so, um, some of our friends live in the west of town, and so they've all been begging us to open up on the east side, so we're like, why not, we'll come to the east side, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And we also like small towns, so like, Bay Village is a very, very small town, there's like two traffic lights and vehicles.
We, we have one.
It's very small, so we, um, we plan on opening more, our next one will probably be Hudson area, um, again, small town, we just play small town.
When, um, will you advertise or you, you don't have any frontage as far as people are going to find you by the look of mouth?
Yes, by mouth, we, um, I, uh, we're very good with marketing, um, we, um, are very connected with the Browns, Indians and Habs team, so they all come take classes, the players take classes, the wives take classes, um, so we're pretty connected, um, with the sports teams in Cleveland, and, um, some of them live on the east side of town and also will take classes, um.
Like you said, I grew up here, so there's a lot of connections, family connection, and, and moved back.
And moved back here, that's where I live here, so that kind of helps, this, you know, start a little bit, just kind of like, a lot of it's swear of mouth, and they're very good at social media, and they're a little bit of a Google ad, but a lot of it's kind of brass, we're marketing.
We want you to be successful with that.
Oh, yeah.
And then, like, we know, we understand, there's like, you know, there's the Snap Fitness there, the yoga, but like, it really is a different.
Pilates is different.
Yeah, it really is a different thing, and they actually kind of all feed off each other.
My concern for you more would be the, um.
Club Pilates.
Club Pilates, and then Altered Core, but very different, but Altered Core is very close to Club Pilates in, on the Bay Ridge quarter.
Yeah, and, uh, I mean, like, in our plaza in Bay right now, we have, uh, two, um, fitness, like, uh, businesses in our actual plaza, we actually cross-market because, um, strength training fits very well with Pilates. So we refer business a lot to a lot of other people. And honestly, if we're not a great fit for somebody, there's plenty of other places that they can go to too. There's a lot, you know, there's a lot of business to go around, is how we kind of see it.
We also kind of position ourselves as more like a boutique, kind of like, you know, kind of homegrown type of studio, whereas like Club Life, I mean, I'm not, it's great, then.
It's great, it's just franchised.
But it's, you know, it's a big one where you have a franchise, that place, we're kind of looking at, but it's kind of small, smaller, like, you know, type of.
When you go to the front desk, and I'm not there, which I'm not there often, and they call, text, or email management, it's me. And a lot of times I get in my personal cell phone number, they call me, you, anything, so it's very, we have a very, very good customer service, it's not franchised, so.
Do you have a question?
So there'll be a little bit of a rush?
A little bit of rush at, um, uh, you know, change of process, but, um, I find that people really do kind of bolt out because they have things going on, and then, um, and people show up anywhere from like, I would say about like five minutes even, sometimes they're like a minute or two late to class, but we allow them in, obviously, class still, but.
Do they reserve the reformers ahead of time, so you're not gonna have like 20 people show up for each?
No, 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 so they, you have to reserve the reformer, and, uh, class shuts off, um, because of classes school. Yeah, we don't have extra reformers, the reformers are, they have, well, he can't, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Do you, do you subscription or pay by class?
We do both, so there's memberships and there's pay by class.
And there's tenant in class typically?
Tenant in class, yeah.
Okay.
I would say anywhere from like 80% is filled, um, obviously, um, you know, with just a soft opening, classes aren't filling yet, but they will eventually fill. And especially during the holidays and, and New Year, they will fill up very quickly, yeah.
Especially, yeah, especially in January.
That's why we kind of wanted to do a soft opening now, before.
New Year's resolution.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I was just trying to think of any obstacles, yeah.
And we have, we have clients of all ages, so all of the clients are welcoming. Our oldest client is, is one of, our oldest client, um, in Bay Village is 92 years old. And I'm telling you what, she's stronger than we in class half the time, so.
That's what usually happens.
But she's been doing Pilates for years and years, and so she's got strong body.
I mean, you know the story of Pilates himself?
Yeah.
Oh, there he is, yeah.
Oh, so Pilates, I mean, maybe, yeah, there's a bunch of different forms of Pilates now, um, but, like, there's Lagree, but Lagree is like a totally different performer, totally different type of Pilates, um.
You're, you're traditional?
We're traditional, yeah.
All right, well, yeah.
Well, move to approve the application.
Questions, yes.
Oh, from the back.
Um, in the past, Lopez would rent, um, parking spaces from that parking lot, is that gonna be?
No.
Allowed, so they solve those issues?
The public hearing for that restaurant is gonna be next month, but, um, they have secured parking spots at St. John Bar.
Okay. And then have you been told about, like, if it gets too busy in that parking lot, is it overflowing to another person?
Have you had any concern or issues with parking with your soft opening, or?
But have you been told that it is overflow parking in a different building?
No, and we, we just haven't had that issue, so not a lot. There's plenty of parking, no matter what time they pull into that plaza, there's plenty of parking.
The, the lot outside, the, the, your side door, that's, that's all your property?
Yes.
Where the, co, co, people come in on the coffee shop, summer time, that's all your?
There's parking on all four sides of the property. So we have a back parking lot, side parking lot, and, uh, one on the Snap Fitness side that has six spaces there as well. And, you know, we thought through Emily's, um, project very carefully, and what we found is that, uh, class size was roughly comparable, actually very comparable to the class sizes that the Valerie's studio had in the past.
The difference is that was drawn off, because I dropped my daughter off at the dance, and we would just leave. So I'm just concerned because if they're overflowing in that parking lot, if they were ever told they could come into our parking lot, since it was in owner. So if you were told that, that's, that, I'm satisfied.
I, I don't see that.
There's three doors, there's three doors to this building, the front door, the side door, which is gonna be, I call it rear door, and then there's one in the back, so.
And they have a rear door.
Yeah, the one that has the gears.
So instructor goes to the rear door, or you get back. Anytime of day I've been there, morning, night, in the last two weeks, it has not been any issue, quite in parking spot immediately.
And when you've done classes, have you done the ones that are back-to-back, like, and has there been any overlap, or?
No, no problem, no problem.
And again, the biggest, my biggest concern and biggest indication to you from what you said is the other tenants in the building seem to be welcoming you, not upset, because when someone parks, it's the true act, you know, if someone parks in your spot, it's, it's challenging.
But they're all trying to host to be there.
Okay.
And I mean, the part of the, our desire to have Pilates in the building, that enhances the traffic.
I think you're gonna have some good cars there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the jeweler already got business from us last week, so that'd be.
That's awesome.
Air salon too, so coffee shop, I was there five times last week.
Wait, when I pulled in yesterday, that look at me, I'm like, oh, there's a coffee shop.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, oh, that makes sense.
You'll have to try it twice, email us.
Yeah, no, I, I, I do floor, I do, like, um, did the Peloton app?
Oh, yeah, it's great.
But I, and my neighbor has a reformer, but I have been wanting to.
Well, email me, I'll be for classes, we love Pilates.
And it's so good for kids. Yeah, it's not, I'm just getting the same. I'm happy to come and talk for you.
My first class is free, so.
Oh, that's very, yeah, got it, yeah, all right. Yeah, I move to approve, uh, the application for Studio One Pilates at 516 East Washington Street, Suite I. Second.
Ali Sabuda?
Yes.
Mark Porter?
Yes.
Bill Perkins?
Yes.
Joe Smerino?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, thank you. Do we have any old business? New business?
Greg does. Just. One, one, one quick question.
Yes.
I mean, is there, is there somewhere where it's written what one has to submit?
I think we need to, so the question was, is there something written?
So, because it's.
There is, it's on the, it's on the form, yeah.
It's on the form. I don't think it says, we never looked at it, it's that it wasn't presented.
Right, but at that point, maybe we should always, you know, kind of go back and say, this might be incomplete, therefore, maybe it shouldn't even have been before us, until we get it, but now we know.
Maybe we should have probably brought it up to Ruth's attention before the meetings.
Well, then, I think that we were waiting for possibly something from the owner, and we didn't get it, right?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
And then, the only other thing we had discussed, because at least three instances I'm aware of now with OrthoSport and them having their soft open earlier, and there's still another business apparently that haven't come before planning and commission, before they opened shop. And it's my understanding, probably pre-COVID, and digging the fire marshal would kind of patrol around to see, is that something that we should look to?
I think we should assign the fire prevention officer to do a, a canvas that the businesses, you know, hasn't been done, probably three or four years.
Really? Doesn't he do an annual, every year?
They do it annually.
Okay.
I can't think of the last, he may have done it this past year.
Okay.
I mean, he's been very good about it, but we want to make sure.
The only thing is Snap, uh, OrthoSport had been there five years before they came here, so, I, I, I don't know. Giving them a list of what businesses should be there, versus what businesses are already.
I can talk to him and say, hey, let's, let's pre-up, it's, it probably could take what he gets, see if there's another database we can take a look at, to make sure we got it all squared away, and, yeah. Yeah, he's been very good at getting out into every business, it took him like six months for the first start, but we'll get it done. With the restaurants moving in, bio-protection is even more important.
Anything else? I move to adjourn.
Seconds.
There we go, on the favor.
All right, all right.
I don't know, really, I got it, uh, one thing I might use with you.
I'm not sure though, I do tend to mess it up.
I always, I'm very good with.
I totally see it.
Me too.
Yeah, thanks very much, yeah, that's what I'm there for.